Good morning. I'm going to call to order the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee. I am joined by Councilwoman Bill Gates, Councilwoman Gallego, and on the phone soon, I understand, Councilwoman Pastor will be joining us. Boy, that's fast. Is that you, Councilwoman?
Yes, it is.
I just said you were going to join us, and here you are.
Thank you.
We're talking about water rates this morning, and I'm wondering if the members of the Citizens Committee who has worked so hard on this would please stand and be recognized. Thank you both very much. I will start with item two, which is a consent item. Does anyone have any questions, comments?
Move approval?
Second.
A motion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Passage to your analysis, Lee. Item three is the program -- oh, I think we're going to continue this to the next meeting. Am I correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, yes. In order to get right to the water items that you're very interested in today, item three is actually an RFP for Transportation 2050 Program Management Consultant, and that's going to be deferred to a future meeting. So we're looking at some additional options for the structure of the RFP to make sure that we can maximize the effectiveness and efficiency of the consultant that we're going to use to help us implement Transportation 2050. So before that RFP is issued, we will bring that back to the Subcommittee for discussion and action.
Good. Thank you very much. Takes us to item four, Water Pipeline Asset Management Update. Kathryn?
We are here today to talk about some very, very important infrastructure issues related to our water and wastewater systems. Some of you have heard a little bit of this before, but I think we'd like to have lots of opportunity for questions and discussion. So I'm going to turn it over to our Water Department, Kathryn Sorensen, our Water Director and her team.
Good morning. So this last year, so we've presenting a bunch of information about our infrastructure to this Subcommittee. We've talked to you about our water treatment plants, our pump stations, reservoirs, wells, a lot of our infrastructure. To give you an idea of what we have and the condition that it's in, we save the best for last, pipelines. We have, just to give you some context, we have about 7,000 miles of water pipelines, about 5,000 miles of sewer pipelines. And pipelines make, in the water utility, pipelines make up about half of our capital improvement program expenses. In the wastewater utility, they make up about 60 percent. So they're a very important part of our system, not only financially, but also obviously just in terms of ensuring reliable water deliveries and the safe removal of wastewater from our homes. It's also important to understand that Phoenix is unique in a couple of ways when it comes to pipelines. Compared to other large cities, our development is relatively spread out, and that means that we have proportionally more pipelines to meet our needs than other large cities. So for example, we have about 7,000 miles of water pipelines. That's about the same amount of pipelines that the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power has, even though they serve 4 million people and we serve 1 and 1/2 million people. So what that means is that the cost of that pipeline rehabilitation and replacement over time is spread over proportionally fewer people because we are relatively spread out. In addition to this, a large proportion of our growth occurred in the '60s, '70s, and '80s during a time in which we allowed the use of a certain type of cement pipe that is now known to be more prone to some structural issues. And so what this means, kind of all taken together, is that pipelines are and will continue to be one of the main cost drivers in the water and sewer utilities. And so it's really important to kind of keep your eye on the pipelines and what's going on with that. We did a very rough estimate of the replacement cost of the infrastructure for the water utility, and this will give you some additional context. So very roughly, we think that the replacement cost of the water utility in total is about $14 billion. 11 billion of that is in pipelines. So it's by far the largest cost driver. So what we're going to do, Assistant Director Troy Hayes and Deputy Director Amy Conroy are going to take you through our pipeline program. And then at the end of that presentation, we want to kind of bring this information and then all the information about our infrastructure that we've been discussing with you over the past year, we'll kind of bring that all together and put it into the context of our five-year financial plan.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee. I'm here to talk to you about our Water Pipeline Asset Management Plans that we've been developing in the Water Services Department. The goal of our system is to use actual pipe condition assessments along with local and national pipe service trends to help us develop how we're going to replace and rehabilitate our pipelines. How are we planning to spend that $11 billion that Kathryn just discussed? So as Kathryn said, this is a kind of a pie chart of our CIP, and 47 percent of our five-year CIP is focused on pipelines. The majority of this is within either assessment or rehabilitation and replacement of existing mains. Our pipe, this is a map of our service area. As Kathryn says, we have 7,000 miles of water mains that are spread over 540 square miles, and we serve 1 and 1/2 million customers. With this water system, we serve up to 380 million gallons a day of water to our customers that varies over, you know, the year based on temperature and different things like that. Our pipe system is categorized into two different types. We have distribution mains, which are very small mains, small as 1 and 1/2 inches in diameter to 14 inches in diameter and makes up about 91 percent of our system. That is the part of our water system that directly impacts customers and goes to businesses and homes. The remaining 9 percent of our mains are the transmission system, which we presented to you a few months ago, and are made up of 16 inches in diameter pipes to 108 inch in diameter pipes. So we're basically trying to figure out how we're going to replace or rehabilitate a wide variety of pipes, and we're doing that using condition assessments and service level As Kathryn said, our system has grown over the years, and this shows accumulative growth as well as those blips in growth mostly in the '60s, '70s, and '80s. You can see with development, and this is how we added pipe to the system. Our CIP up until the 2000s was very focused on growth, where in the last five years, over 75 percent of our CIP has been based on renewal. So some of the key questions that we're trying to answer with our asset management plans throughout the whole CIP is what do we need to replace or rehabilitate, and when, and how much will that cost?
And the average lifespan of a distribution pipeline is somewhere around 75 years. And so if you look at that chart, most of the growth in Phoenix was in the '60s and '70s and '80s, and that's coming to the end of its useful life somewhere in the next 20 years or so. And so we have this mountain that's coming towards us. That's not really what we see with the breaks today, but that is coming.
And here is the mountain. So basically, this is a very simplistic view of looking at pipe renewal and replacement. It is based on some American Water Works Association reports and pipe service levels of lasting from anywhere to 50 to 110 years depending on the pipe material. This analysis is based on that 75-year lifespan, and it only looks at age, doesn't look at condition. So as you can see, when we get to the pipes being 75 years old, we have a very large mountain in 2070. Currently, this $11 billion if spread over that 75 years would mean that we would have to spend $147 million a year on pipeline replacement or renewal over that time period. Our current budget is based on, is $56 million a year. Prior to this, our funding within main replacement was a lot less than $56 million, and it equated to a replacement cycle of replacing pipe once every 350 years. If we go with our current funding of $56 million per year, that brings our replacement cycle down to 230 years. Industry averages or standards which we'd like to meet is replacing or renewing our system 2 percent every year, which would be 100-year lifecycle. So you can see we're well over double that. But age is not the only way, nor is it the best way to develop what your performance is. So we're looking at assessments. What this is, this is one of our large transmission mains, and this shows some of our assessment techniques that we are using. Like I said, we have two different types, very distinct types of water mains. We have the distribution system where we've done integrity studies. The first one was in 1999, and then we did another one in 2006, and we're currently renewing that ourselves. Those earlier studies basically said to just keep up with the small system, the substandard mains, we had to spend anywhere from $10 million to $37 million per year. On the transmission mains, we're doing inspection programs using this kind of assessments. We presented the pre-stressed concrete cylinder pipe program a couple months ago. Our goal is to look at the condition and then develop what our replacement program is going to be. This chart is basically based on our break history in the distribution system, so that's small mains, the 1 and 1/2 inch to 14 inch diameter. What it shows in the blue bars is what our individual pipe breaks per 100 miles were in each of those years, and the red line shows how we were, what number of miles we were replacing. So what you can see is our program increased, we actually did see decrease in pipe breaks because we were dealing with mains that were breaking and areas that were breaking, and that's the goal of asset management. Our focus with this program is the smaller mains. We are using main break data to develop survivability charts, so we're looking at service levels. When do we think for each type of material, based on our system and our conditions, will we see breaks, and so we can get ahead of the curve instead of behind the curve? We're using risk to develop our new CIP instead of just age. The second part of our system is the large transmission system, and we're using the direct assessments and inspection of our larger pipelines. What this graph shows is when we, or our system, as we've inspected and re-inspected pipelines, we have 150 miles of pre-stressed concrete cylinder pipe, and that is the majority of our large critical systems, the backbone. And this shows our plan to look at all those pipes so that we can develop what our rehabilitation costs need to be. We are really looking at condition and risk, not age, as part of developing our system. In conclusion, what we've seen is that our efforts have led to, what we've seen is that we've been able to validate our past plans. When you looked at the first graph, you saw that with increased investment in replacing mains, we did see a decrease in main breaks. We're also addressing, through our inspection program, PCCP or large mains that are ready, that could fail. Our new plans are centered around risk, and we're developing our service level trends as well as our funding based on our strategic plans and our commitments to be able to supply water to the community. And with that, does anyone have any questions?
Councilman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for the presentation. I think maybe I missed something, just the, you had that spike in main breaks in 2013. What was causing that?
Councilwoman Gates, that wasn't actually a spike in main breaks, that was a spike in replacement. The red line is the amount of miles that we replaced that year, and the spike in replacement was based on funding, where we had to do some reshuffling of the CIP, so we moved some projects around, and they ended up being built in that year. So instead of seeing a steady increase because of some funding issues, we had quite a bit of miles, or quite a bit of projects that all were completed in 2013, so we saw a spike in increase. What you're seeing is kind of a steady decrease in main breaks, which are the blue bars.
That's what I would say. If you look at that chart, it's a general trend line of a downward slope of main breaks. Each individual year could vary depending on what's going on temperature-wise that year, or other thing you might see breaks out in the system. As our system, as all systems, are sensitive to temperature changes in the earth, and as the earth cools or heats up, it then puts stress on the pipes, and then the older age with the conditions that they're in then sometimes leads to a failure.
So why are we seeing a decrease in main breaks then as the infrastructure ages? That seems kind of counterintuitive.
Right, but there was an increase in the program in the '90s where we really started looking at water mains and then the water main replacement program. Prior to that, there wasn't really an established program. It was just going out hit or miss and looking at pipelines then.
So for the integrity studies, they recommended that we do small main replacement. So our initial program, and the program that we're still working on right now, looked at areas where we saw large main breaks, where we were seeing 2-inch mains and alleys that were breaking four or five times along a block. And we hit those areas first, the substandard mains. Since those were the majority of our, large majority of the breaks, not all of them, we were able, by replacing them and moving them out of the alleys into the streets with larger, larger, different material mains, we were able to decrease the main breaks because we weren't continually going out to areas, mostly in alleys, and replacing continuously.
And that's similar to our system now. Essentially, what we're doing is we're looking at break data as well as age and other ones, and then adjusting our CIP annually of shifting into areas and pipe materials where that need is most readily needed, I guess.
And is that kind of, is that sort of a strategy, system-wide strategy, that we're trying to move out of alleys and into streets?
Yes, that is our, that has been our strategy since the early 2000s, yes.
Another kind of line of questioning, as it relates to growth, okay? We know that there's growth occurring, well, we know that with the Great Recession, obviously things slowed down, we didn't see a lot of growth. Now we're seeing more growth in the city, we're seeing more development, but it tends to be within established neighborhoods already, so we're seeing more, we're growing up more. Can you talk about what you are planning to do to address that, and is that part of this request that as we're replacing pipes, we're expanding capacity?
Right, well, the other thing that's going, happening at the same time is our GPCD, or gallons per capita per day, is actually trending down as well. And so even though our population is increasing, the actual water that we're using is paying similar, somewhat flat. And so we haven't really seen the infill putting stresses on the size of our pipes. It's actually the evaluation of the other way. A lot of times, we're evaluating pipes to decrease them as we're putting new pipes in.
And then, Councilwoman?
You mentioned a 75-year lifetime for pipelines on average. What would be the lifetime of the pipelines built in sort of the '60s when you said there was?
And that's what Amy was talking about. It's actually dependent a lot on the pipe material. We see some pipes that, you know, that'll go way past 100 years or so, and then other pipes that aren't performing as well. So it's really depending on the pipe material, and it's kind of what Kathryn started to talk about when we first started, is depending on that pipe material and depending on the materials that were put in during that decade, you either see that lasting a little bit longer, a little bit less than the 75 years, but the 75 years is a national average for pipe materials in our system.
But the concrete pipes that Kathryn mentioned, we're looking at how much less than 75?
Right, so there are some batches of these types of pipes that were put in in those decades that we know from industry research tend to have, tend to be more prone to problems than other types of materials. And so we expect that a fair number of those pipes will last less than the 75 years. But it's very difficult to predict, and some of them turn out to be fine, and some of them will only last 30 years. It depends on the particular batch and the year that it was installed, and then environmental conditions as well. But we know it's an issue in our system, and unfortunately, the City of Phoenix is also unique in this way. We have one of the highest proportions of this type of material in our system if you look out nationwide. We have one of the biggest problems.
And what we've seen in our break data so far is it's trending on with the older pipe. We see a lot of galvanized alley pipes. It's mostly what we're replacing and mostly where we're seeing the mains breaking. As you remember, there was the breaks on Seventh Avenue, or those were all 1920s and '30s pipes, and so it's kind of trending that way.
And I'm guessing most of the areas of needs are not impact fee areas?
Oh, correct, they are not impact fee areas. No, we're looking, the pipes that you're asking about are mostly within the central city. We have pockets probably, you know, north of Bell and pockets south of Broadway based on how growth hot scotched its way around. Also, the City of Phoenix also bought a lot of water systems that were built at different times, weren't necessarily built by us or developers under our control, so that's why it's kind of spotty throughout the area. It's just based on the growth patterns within Phoenix itself.
Councilman?
Right, thank you, Madam Chair. So do you have the figures on how much money the city has spent on pipeline replacement over the past five years?
Councilmember, yes, we do. I don't know, it's not on the chart, but we can provide that to you with no problem.
Okay. And because from the report, it's saying that you would like to spend $370 million on pipeline rehabilitation and replacement over the next five years.
Correct.
So however you calculated that number, if you could provide that number to me for the same reasons. And then on the $370 million, do you know now where you want to do that at? Do you have specific projects identified?
So yes and no. I'll let Amy and Troy elaborate. Some of them we know very definitively, others we know we'll need, but we don't know exactly where. So we put them into kind of a specific pot that we hold until we know exactly what project is going to be used for that money. So it's a combination of both, but I'll let Amy elaborate.
A portion of that is within our transmission system. We have mains that we have inspected, the last graph that you saw that we've inspected that we know we have issues with and we need to, you know, evaluate further. The Val Vista Transmission Main, which basically brings our, quite a bit of our water from our Val Vista Water Treatment Plant, which is in Mesa, into Phoenix. We have a program that we're about halfway done, so that is part of those needs, not all of it is funded. For the distribution system, we are looking at basically what our break history is, and we're looking at criticality of the areas, looking at growth, and we're also looking to see where we're seeing problems. So we're actually using GIS to map our breaks, and then we're looking for almost like hot spots, and we're basing our projects on those hot spots. So instead of going and just doing a quarter section or a quarter square mile at a time that we know the pipe's 50 years old or 100 years old, we're actually saying, looking at where our breaks are, how old is it, what does it serve, and is it more critical based on where it's at and what it's serving than something that's a little older? So we're using our break data and the type of material as the basis for developing our program, and we're just getting into that using our asset management system now, where we're looking at it a lot more closely than we have in the past.
But to answer your question, Councilmember, they are broken down into very specific projects. We, so particularly for the next three years, we basically know exactly which projects, which pipes, where we're going to go. As you go a little bit further out, we hold some money to go, because we're not entirely sure, we have a rough idea, but that project hasn't been specifically defined.
Okay, and is that something that we could have access to?
Oh, yes.
Absolutely.
And there, I think you had a slide a few back that shows the amount, I think it's the amount of money that you intend to spend or which pipelines you intend to repair. It's broken down by decade? Can you pull that up?
Well, this is purely based on age.
Yeah, this one here. Okay. So explain this to me a little bit. How did you come up with this?
So what we did is we looked at when the pipe was built. We said we're going to replace it when it's 75 years old. When does that occur? So if you look at the pipe that's supposed to be replaced in the 2020s, that was built in the, you know, in the '40s and '50s.
And then you take that with the cost per inch that we would, and then extrapolate that with the database and then to get a projection of what that replacement cost is?
Right, and to clarify, Councilmember, this is meant to be a very rough idea of when we might need to replace these things. We go in and do inspections on the larger pipes. The smaller pipes, you don't really inspect so much. You just, you know how many times they break. We keep track of how many breaks we have in the system. And then at a given point in time, we go, okay, that's enough breaks, we need to go in and replace the whole segment. So we would not actually replace pipelines necessarily on this schedule. This just gives you a rough idea based on age of what we need to build up to, if that makes sense.
Okay, yeah, because my next question was going to be, I thought you said something about it, we're on it, currently on a 230-year replacement schedule.
Correct.
So can you do a slide for, or, you know, provide us with the information based upon your request for $370 million, what that looks like?
Absolutely, and so, and I'm, Councilmember, I'm glad you asked that because it is an important point. We're not an old system, we're not a young system, we're a very middle-aged system. But it's great to be middle-aged compared to a lot of other utilities in the country.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so we kind, so when Amy said, if you, if you just took this $11 billion and then divided, you know, and came up with a steady program year after year, it was about $150 million that we need to be spending every year. We don't need to be spending $150 million right here, right now, and you can see that based on this chart. We can still kind of rely on our middle age and invest a little bit less right now, but what we need to be cognizant of is that eventually, we got to climb this mountain. So our trend needs to be upward, and we need to just be cognizant that if we're not dealing with it in a responsible and reasonable way today, we're really handing off a big problem to future ratepayers.
And so also, I don't see the slide deck up here. Could we get a copy of that?
Oh, of course.
Like emailed to our office?
Of course, sorry, yeah.
Oh, okay, I guess it's down the way. I just, I don't have, okay, now I have one.
There you go.
Never mind, thank you very much.
No problem.
Appreciate the, appreciate the information.
Do we have any other questions? We do have a card, Richard Ray.
We always like to hear. Richard Ray, 4130 North Joe Cockey. I've been involved in this process for the last six years, and we've dealt with the details. And right now, this is sort of the beginning of what I hope is going to be the change in the attitude of what needs to be done in the City of Phoenix. What Kathryn has put forth and what other people have mentioned absolutely are going to be critical in that we don't find ourselves in the situation that other cities have, where if the money isn't there, they don't spend it, and then the bad things start happening. A lot of that pipe, too much of the pipe unfortunately, is subject to deterioration. It does deteriorate. It doesn't have the ability to hold on to its internal strength, and if anything is going on, whether there be other construction in the area or something else, it just begins to kind of fold up to itself. So it's time that we recognize that we need to begin doing the replacement in an aggressive way, waiting 230 years or 350 years, that's obviously not what happens. But if we get ahead of it and we get to the place where we're taking care of our infrastructure, we're going to be making certain that for the rest of time and for future generations, they're not going to have the problems that other cities have when there isn't a recognition that there needs to be replacement. I mean, an awful lot happened here in the '50s and '60s. A fair amount happened later, but the problem is we need to replace those things now, and that's what needs to be taken care of. So I hope that this will be something that, and I think you've got the chart, I hope this is something that you will see positively as a reason to recommend moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Pastor, do you have?
Yes, I just needed to get some clarity in the sense of currently, the replacement of the pipes is coming from CIP, is that correct? And as we move forward to the $370 million, where would that money be coming from?
Councilwoman Pastor, it all comes from our capital improvement program.
So with the $370 million for me, I need to understand where that money is going to go to, what maintenance is going to go to, what the list, in order for me to make a very critical decision.
Of course.
And have an understanding. My assumption--
My assumption, and it's probably assumption, I'm assuming, and I shouldn't, one of the four agreements is not to assume, but that there's always been a maintenance plan for replacing of the pipelines. And I am coming now discovering that in certain areas, there not, there isn't a maintenance plan. But I'm assuming that there has always been a maintenance plan to replace our pipelines.
So, Councilwoman Pastor, let me answer it this way. So we've always had a maintenance plan in the sense that when our pipelines experience leaks and breaks, we go out and fix those pipelines. And that has always been the case. We have, in the past, replaced pipelines as our system aged, but we have not needed to replace them particularly aggressively because our system was relatively young. But we are now, like I said, we're moving on into middle age, and it's time for us to start building up that program to replace mains that are past their useful life, if that makes sense. So there's always been a program, there's always been a plan. The difference that we're putting forward is that we want to spend more money and more aggressively replace these pipelines as they continue to age.
Catherine, do you have documentation? I know that the city is, as it expanded from the 60s through the 90s, we took in a lot of county land. And do they have the same standards that we did? Because I have heard differently, but I'd like to hear your answer.
So, right, Councilwoman Williams, Chairwoman Williams, thank you so much for asking that. No, the standards were not the same. And this is, it's a very common problem. When we took over and bought out the old private water utilities, the standards tended to be much lower than what we insist on in our system. So we are kind of stuck with that infrastructure. It is what it is, and we have to go back in and, for the most part, replace it.
And I'm wondering if those happens to be towards the top of your list of replacements because I know I have neighborhoods that complain, have water breaks and other problems. And I'm just curious because I have the feeling that replacement now, using a better quality of pipe, and I'm assuming, as Councilwoman Pastor has said, I probably shouldn't do that, that you now have new standards that will increase the life of these pipes as we do replacements, correct?
Councilwoman Williams, yes, that's correct. So we feel much more comfortable with our standards today, obviously. Over time, you learn exactly what your environment is and what materials work best for your system. So we feel very comfortable with our standards today. We do have to address the standards that were used for the private water companies that were put in back decades ago. And like I said, even, you know, we did, we in the past had some standards that allowed some materials that today we would not allow. So we do have to go back and address that. Regarding the priority of replacement for those particular systems, so I'll say, we can look specifically at the areas you're concerned about and give you a more specific answer. But in general terms, what we look at is a combination of both age and what we call condition based on our history of line breaks. So it depends on both of those factors where you end up on the priority list. Right now, a lot of our priorities tend to be in central Phoenix because that's the oldest part of our system. But it also, but that's not exclusively so. And like I said, it depends on age and the number of breaks that are occurring elsewhere in the system.
As you go forward in this, and you are doing the projections of replacement in the future, are you anticipating that this will be a better quality of pipe and therefore the life span would be longer than what it currently is?
Yeah. Essentially, like I said, the 75 years is an average, and what we see now is the pipe materials that we're putting in go far beyond 100 years. And so we're seeing that life going off of what was installed in the past and learning from that. The pipe material that's used now is far exceeding 75 years, even well, maybe up to 125 years, 150 years.
I'm trying to justify my mind that we, I know we need to do replacement. How aggressive we become makes me want to think that we're going to be saving money in the long run by doing it now, but I just don't have that in hand from this report. So I guess I need you to beef up some areas to tell me that, in the long run, how much better off we are, not only for quality of water, but for financial purposes.
Right. So Councilwoman Williams, there's kind of a couple of aspects to that. One is financial. So if you look today about, at our water distribution section, so these are the crews that go out and repair leaks and breaks. Their work is purely reactive. All that they do is go out and repair those leaks and breaks. And so over time, one would expect that as we get ahead of these leaks and breaks and more proactively replace our pipelines, that their workload goes down, and then we can use the savings from that basically to address other parts of our system, such as valves and hydrants. That will take time. You won't see that immediately. But I would, but we do expect that they're, over the long term, it's obviously, you know, to the extent that we're replacing pipe proactively and not experiencing those leaks and breaks, we're not paying to fix them. But the other thing to keep in mind is that really this is just an issue of reliability. So while, you know, we can go out and repair pipelines, and we can do that all day long, we do that all day long. In fact, our water distribution crews work 24/7. So we can do that, but really it becomes an issue of reliability for our customers. Not only for single-family residential homes, and it's inconvenient to be out of water. I think we've all experienced that at some point or another, unfortunately. But when you talk about our restaurants, our businesses, our industries, that, you know, that's where really we can cause true harm if we're not careful to ensure those reliable deliveries over time.
And then with the large diameter, we're doing the condition assessment. Because what we're trying to avoid is the catastrophic failure, similar to what you saw with UCLA last year. You have the large mains that are under high pressure that then have a catastrophic failure, and you're taking out large neighborhoods of flooding areas and things like that. So there's a dual program that kind of goes on.
Do we have any further questions, councilman?
Thank you. We've kind of talked about breaks, but you mentioned leaks. I mean, in District 3, that's what we primarily deal with are leaks. And again, I think that you've actually cataloged the number of breaks, but do you keep track of the number of leaks? And is that something that you could, because, you know, people feel like the breaks are going up. They, I mean, leaks.
Yeah.
What's the truth?
So, councilmember, well, when it happens to you, of course, it's extremely inconvenient and potentially really difficult for that particular person or business. So of course, it always feels like there's more. Our trend over the last two years is actually a downward trend as we're starting to get ahead. So I have actually right here, let me pull it up, this last year. Sorry. Oh, here it is. So the number of leaks and breaks per 100 miles of water lines, in fiscal year 1314, we experienced 17 per 100. In fiscal year 1415, we experienced 14 per 100. So actually, we did experience fewer breaks, which is good news. But when it happens to you individually, it doesn't feel like it.
And do you have leaks separated out somewhere?
They're within that number.
They're just within that number?
So we count, if it's a leak or a break, we basically count it the same.
Okay. Thank you.
When it's a leak, do you have to replace the whole pipe?
No, no, there's different strategies based on what happens with the pipe. And so one of the things that you saw on one of the slides is the service worker actually cutting in a new segment. The other things that we can do is put in collars, depending on what the leak is, you know, to put a band around it to then stop the leak. So there's different ways in which we address the different types of things that happen with the pipe.
Any other questions? Well, this was for information and discussion, so we look forward to having you give us the additional information and to bring it back to us in the future.
Thank you.
This is an expensive day, I think, at this. Next one is water and wastewater financial plans.
Okay. So like, Chairwoman Williams, committee members, like I said, when we started off, what we were hoping to do over this last year is give you an idea of what our infrastructure is, what condition it's in, our plans for replacing and rehabilitating it. We ended with pipelines, and we want to try to pull all of this together so that you just have a broad overview of what it means in terms of the financial plan for the water and sewer utilities. So here with me today, Denise Olson, who's our interim director for the finance department. And then, of course, you know Troy Hayes. And Ron Ciro is our assistant director in the wastewater utility. Uh-oh, I turned it off. Sorry. Ooh, there it goes. So we do have a community water system, and sometimes we forget this, but of course, we are owned by the people, and you are the trustee of that community water system on behalf of the people. We don't make a profit, but we do, but in order to ensure our financial viability, we do need to make enough revenue to cover debt service, operating costs, capital, and thus the emphasis on capital, and then to have enough money left over to have reserve levels that allow us to react to catastrophic and unforeseen events, which we hope don't happen, and also to have reserve funds that keep our bond ratings high enough that we keep the cost of borrowing low. So that's our goal, is to make enough money to cover those things. We don't make a profit. That's all we're after. But within that, so we collectively have a duty to the community. So our duty is to make sure that operational expenses, debt service, the cost of capital is as low, is low enough to maintain reasonable rates while still maintaining a very reliable system. And obviously, that's a balance. We could literally have, we could minimize our costs by literally not providing water, right? We would have no cost, but we would have no water. We could gold plate this system and hire seven times more people than what we need and have the best system in the world, but it would be outrageously expensive. So obviously, we're trying to find that reasonable place in the middle as stewards of this system to make sure that we have a system that meets people's needs but is still affordable. So in a nutshell, this is where the money goes. This is the pie. And what you'll see for both the water and wastewater utility is that the majority of the expenses are associated with capital, infrastructure. And I'm sorry, but that's why we've emphasized it so much over this last year. There's capital in the form of debt service, and that's infrastructure that we have already built, and now we have to pay the bill for. And then, of course, there's our cash capital program for things that we are rehabilitating and replacing and developing today.
Madam Chair, and a question on that, if you can provide us with kind of a trend on what's happened with your budget over the past five years and then what, and I don't know how far you have it forecast out. I mean, I'm guessing this is kind of more an approximation, but...
So we'll go into that if you'll give me just a second, and I'll address that exact point.
Thank you.
But again, this is why we say, for the most part, that infrastructure is the driver of rates. It's the majority of our cost. So the way I structured this presentation, I thought, if, I tried to think of the questions I would ask if I were in your shoes. And so what I want to go into is, are operational expenses, debt service, and capital, are they at reasonable levels to serve our community? And so I'm hoping that as we go through the presentation, that's the question that is asked and answered. So Denise will talk about debt service. So this is our forecasted debt service over the five-year financial plan. And the question is whether that is at reasonable levels.
So, yes, the debt service is at reasonable levels. We are hitting our financial targets that we put together for the rating agencies. And as you know, this is a AAA rating. Right now, the average annual debt service for this system is about $118 million. It is anticipated to go up in the year 2021, 2022, when we bring on a new bond program. We are, right now, debt outstanding is about $1.4 billion.
And I would also add that the finance department, Denise is being modest here, but the finance department has done a really great job in refinancing our debt service when possible to save as much money as possible. And we've saved about $73 million in recent refinancings. Okay, so operational expenses, you can see here, this is the general trend for our operational expenses. Councilmember, what I'll do is try to answer your question in this context. So if you look at, if you look at our budget, our budget trend, our O&amp;M trend for our budget is down. And that's both good and bad. And the reason for that is good in that through the work of the efficiency task force that many people have participated on, we have been able, over time, to operate very efficiently and to realize some very significant savings. But it's also not such a good thing because right now, we, a lot of our savings are because of vacancies. And we, and when we have too many vacancies, it means that the work, the preventative maintenance type of work that we, that needs to get done is not being done. And so our budget trend is downward, but I, some of that is for good reasons, for efficiency reasons, but some of that is because we're having a difficult time right now filling our vacancies, and that's not a good thing. So work is not, work that we want to get done is not getting done. But I will say, so in general terms, our operational level, our operational expenses are very reasonable. We benchmark very well in the industry, both nationally and locally, which is what you would expect. We're a large utility, we should realize economies of scale. I'm going to show you some of our benchmarks, and then we'll talk about what we think is going to happen in the future. So I tried to bench, I'm lucky, there's a financial survey that's available every two years. It's a national survey, it's done by the Association of Metropolitan Water Agencies. It gives me a lot of really rich data that I can use to benchmark our utility. What I do is try to do it a couple of different ways. We look at our O&amp;M expenses per capita, our O&amp;M expenses per account, and our O&amp;M expenses per million gallons of water produced. And you can see here that we benchmark very well. I took a national median, and then I also took a look at the largest cities that responded to the survey. I looked at cities that were at least 800,000 in service area population and above to get an idea, because really, those are our peers. There are a lot of economies of scale in a water utility, so large utilities should operate efficiently. So I wanted to know in particular how we benchmark against them. I will also say regarding the Arizona average, unfortunately, this last year, only three other Arizona utilities participated in the survey. I went ahead and included that number, but I'm not, I'm not sure it's really a fair comparison since it's only three others. So just keep that in mind. But we do benchmark very well. But back to your question, Councilmember Gates, we do anticipate that our costs are going to increase over time. There's our operational costs, there's a couple of different drivers for that. We call them the big four. Of course, labor is a big driver. Labor's not on this chart, but the cost of labor is increasing, and we expect it to increase. Outside of labor, these are our largest expenses. Our raw water purchases, our chemicals, electricity, and then granulated activated carbon, which is used for disinfection by product control in, basically, water quality in the system. The driver here, you'll see pretty quickly, is really the cost of raw water. We expect the cost of raw water to increase by about 50% over this time horizon, but I have to qualify that. That's, that was calculated without a potential shortage on the Colorado River. If there's a shortage on the Colorado River, and it looks like there will be, then we would expect the cost of those raw water supplies to be even greater. I can't quantify that right now because I don't know what that looks like. The Board of Directors of the Central Arizona Project has not really given us an idea yet of how exactly those costs will be spread or paid for. So I don't know what it is, but I do know if there's shortage on the river, it will be worse.
Catherine, I would say at an annual meeting recently, the CAP presented, and they just kept saying substantial, substantial.
Substantial, right.
To expect that. And if the EPA shuts down the power plant, it would be probably double the substantial rate they're anticipating. So I could see that just skyrocketing for the raw water.
So Councilwoman Williams, yes, you're right. We certainly should not expect it to get better.
No.
But how much worse, we don't know.
And just a follow-up question on that. Do we anticipate that in the upcoming year?
Councilmember Gates, not in the upcoming year. We'll be coming back on November 10th and giving you an update on the projections on the Colorado River. And really, we, so we would not expect it this year, we would not expect it the following year, but I think the chances really start to increase after that. There's a lot of talk about El Nino. Unfortunately, El Nino doesn't really help us on the Colorado River. At least, we shouldn't expect it to. We hope that it will help us... year, but I think the chances really start to increase after that. There's a lot of talk about El Nino. Unfortunately, El Nino doesn't really help us on the Colorado River, at least we shouldn't expect it to. We hope that it will help us in our reservoirs here locally in the state. But we'll be coming back on November 10th and talking more specifically about those probabilities and showing you what that looks like. Also, keep in mind that even when there's shortage on the Colorado River, we don't anticipate that it will affect our supplies directly for many years, but it does potentially impact the cost of the water. Um, oh, sorry.
Yep. So, on this, so you have the big four expenses there. Do you have the actuals for, I mean, just looking for the, just for the actuals for those years, starting in fiscal year 10, 11?
Absolutely. We can provide you a copy of the previous year actuals.
And do you have estimates on how many employees you intend to hire in the next year? Because I know you were talking about vacancies.
Right. Councilmember, I don't have an estimate. I can come up with one for you. I will tell you that we are trying very hard to hire people into our system. We're having a very difficult time finding skilled labor. So, things like electricians, industrial mechanics, senior utility operators, we're having a very difficult time finding the skilled labor for those particular positions. Troy can talk a little bit about the water distribution side. We're also trying to really staff up to make sure that we're addressing those leaks and breaks in a timely manner. So, I don't, Troy, do you want to talk a little bit about your plans?
Right. So on the water distribution side, what we've gone to in this past year is gone to a continuous hiring process, essentially. And so, every month, we meet with the city's HR department, in which we're going through applications and having an interview process to hiring people on. And so, currently, we're hiring somewhere between 20 and 30 a month, and then we lose to attrition and other things. And so, we are gaining on that, and so we think we're going to be close to 90-plus percent full on the water distribution side by the end of the calendar year. But it's been a year-long effort and, and keep pushing. Obviously, it is a difficult job, the water distribution crews, and then the sewer crews are out in the heat all through the summer, and they're the ones out in the street that you see. And so, there is a little bit of turnover in that group. But like I said, the continuous process that we're hiring all the time and continually working on that has helped drive those numbers down.
And Councilmember Gates, I would also add, you know, Phoenix is not unique in, in this situation. It's an industry-wide problem, particularly as the baby boomers retire. There's just an enormous amount of turnover, and we're having a very difficult time keeping up. Our vacancy rates have basically doubled over the last, I think, believe it's four years. So, we used to be, hover just under 10%, we're now around 17%.
Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Councilwoman?
I understand that we have a significant portion of the water workforce that's eligible for retirement, or...
Uh, yes. Councilwoman Gago, I'm sorry, I don't remember the percentage off the top of my head. I just remember that it's horrifying, and that it's, it's really a problem for us and one that we're trying desperately to address.
At the council, we get to look at, across many departments, and I regret to say yours is among the most.
Yeah, yeah, it's great.
We just had great news, or I think maybe, maybe we're about to announce great news on the transportation side about a capital grant that the city has received where we haven't before. And so, we always like to look when we have large expenses, if there's other branches of government where we can. And my sense is with water, that unfortunately, most of the aid that's available is for small and rural.
Councilwoman Gago, that's correct. Although, we did land a $300,000 grant just this last year through the Bureau of Reclamation for one of our recharge and recovery wells that we're building as part of our drought resiliency program. So we're always out there looking, but for the most part, that's true. Water utilities are funded by their ratepayers, and so, that tends to mean that there's, there's less in grant money available. And what grant money is available tends to go to smaller utilities that really don't have the population base to pay for improvements.
So as best I could see, where we might be eligible for federal aid, it seemed like it might be on the job training side. And that's obviously, given the magnitude of this, it is a few million dollars, but we need to be diligent with the few million dollars. And it looks like many of the aid packages were particularly targeted where the infrastructure needs were in lower-income areas, and that does seem to dovetail with our needs in that area. So I would love it if, as we go through this process, we can look more broadly and, and at job training in particular as a potential sort.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yes. Regarding electricity and chemicals, I just want to mention really quickly, so obviously, we always try very hard to minimize our electrical expenses and reduce our energy usage, both because it's, it's the smart thing to do, and, and also because it's the, the right thing to do. But it's very difficult for us to, we also have to operate this system so that it's reliable. And depending on the various outages on the different canals, on the different SRP canals, we have to operate different plants at different times, different pump stations at different times. And some of those are, some of those pump stations and water treatment plants are more efficient and less efficient. And so, we're always looking at it. I want you to understand, we're always trying our best to save as much energy as we can. We have a very aggressive energy conservation program, but ultimately, we have to run the system to make sure that we're delivering the water where it needs to go. And so, we're somewhat constrained in some of our biggest choices regarding energy efficiency. Our chemical costs, we're actually hoping to keep relatively constant over this time period, but I want to warn you that that all depends on the quality of water that comes down the SRP and CIP canals. And if we return to days where the water quality is not as good as it has been over the last couple of years, those costs will increase as well. So regarding our capital needs, this just gives you an idea of what's in the, what is programmed in the five-year financial plan for our cash capital needs. And then, again, the question is, well, okay, that's great, but is, is that a reason, is that reasonable? Are your capital needs reasonable? So broadly, this is, I want to tell you, this is probably the most difficult question to answer, because of course, we always go out, as Amy and Troy explained, and you've seen over the last year, we have a very extensive condition assessment program, but at the end of the day, these are estimates, and once, and we never know for sure what we're going to find until, for example, we get into the reservoir and drain it and see what's really going on in there. And sometimes, we're pleasantly surprised, and sometimes not so pleasantly surprised. So it's, but what I will say, in general terms, is that this is our best estimate of what we need over the next five years to maintain a reliable system. I will also tell you broadly, I feel that this is a conservative low estimate of what we're going to need over the next five years to maintain a reliable system. And you can see, again, there's our pipelines right up there at the top. Also, I thought it might be, just give you some perspective to take a look at what, how our capital needs have been budgeted over a longer period of time than just the five-year financial plan. So you can see, and this is kind of an interesting story of the City of Phoenix Water Utility in general, you can see that during the growth years, we are, our capital budgets tended to be higher because we were responding to that growth and the needs of the system. What we expect to see from now on out, we've built our major infrastructure. There's still a little bit, but not a lot, in terms of, of growth in the system. We've built the big stuff. What we're looking at in the future is steady strategic rehabilitation and replacement over time.
Madam Chair, so this is budget, like on, on fiscal year 10, 11, were the actuals in line with that, or?
Councilmember Gates, it depends on the year. Generally, the actuals come in a little bit less than what's budgeted, which is, which is both good and bad. It's good in that we're spending less money, but if that work needs to be done, it means that we perhaps didn't rehabilitate something in the manner that we planned, or in the timeline that we planned. But in general terms, the actuals tend to be a little bit lower than the budget. But it's hard to compare actuals to future budgets, so I thought it would be, it gives you a good apples-to-apples comparison to see how we've budgeted our CIP over time.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gates, in those particular years, the 2010, 11, as well as the '07, '08, it's, it's close. And so, in the '07, '08, that's when we were constructing and paying for the Lake Pleasant Water Treatment Plant, which is $250 million or so. And then, 2010, 11, we were installing the disinfection by product rule changes, which would be GAC and establishing all that, and that was around $200 million or so. So it's, it's not probably too far off.
And then, I'll have Denise talk about what, so if you remember back to my, my pie, remember that we're trying to earn enough revenue to cover all the expenses in that pie, but then also to leave a little bit of money left over for our reserve levels. And so Denise will talk about our reserves.
So, what the goal is, or what our financial target is for our reserve levels, is to have at least one year's worth of annual debt service payments. And if you remember in the chart before, our annual debt service payments is running around 118 to 125 million dollars. And so, that's our financial target. So what's happened over the years is, you can see, the fund balance did go up in years 12, 13. If you remember, that's also when we had a major capital program, so the fund balance will go up. Then you can see, we started doing refinancing of that debt, so the fund balance requirements can go down because our annual debt service number is going down. And also, we were trying to be conscientious to our ratepayers, so we were using our fund balance wisely and strategically so that we wouldn't have to have rate increases. Going forward, though, you can see that we've basically used all of our refinance savings, so now we're going to have to look at additional revenue to continue maintaining their system. And so, that's what this chart is showing. In the year 2021, again, we're anticipating another bond program, which means we will have to increase that fund reserve to support that bond program.
I wanted to add to this, too. This, this is both good news and bad news. The good news is that our customers are saving more and more water. They are embracing that desert lifestyle, which is the right thing to do, it's the sustainable thing to do. It's also valuable to us because it creates a buffer between our demands and our available water supplies that we can rely on during drought and shortage on the Colorado River. So it's a great thing, but it does also mean that there is downward pressure on our revenues in general terms. And so, that's something to keep an eye on as well. This is a trend that is also seen across the utility industry broadly. So here are our facts on the ground. We do need to continue to pay debt service, we need to cover operational expenses, and we expect those to increase. We need to support our capital program if we're going to have a reliable system. Our fund balance is declining, and our consumption rates are declining. So that's, that's the basis of our five-year plan. So, I'm going to go through this a little more quickly, because it's a lot of the same information, but just for the wastewater utility as opposed to the water utility. But please stop me if you have specific questions.
Can I make a quick comment? I remember, I believe, in years about 11 and 12, the council made the decision not to raise rates, that we would reduce the fund balance to compensate. You're shaking your head, yes, I remember, you must be correct. And we knew a day of reckoning would come when we had spent down as low as we could go. How long has it been since we had an increase?
Actually, I'm going to zoom you really quickly to the very end of this presentation, and then we'll go back. And don't worry, I'll go through this quickly. I don't want to freak you out with how many slides there are.
Yeah, I'm going to say, whoa, this is getting long.
But here we are at the end. So this shows you, back in 2012, am I seeing that? Sorry, I don't have my glasses on. We had a slight increase in water, and, but then a decrease in wastewater to offset, so that the net impact to our customers was zero. So you really have to go back, basically, five years, to when there was really a rate increase that had an impact on our customers.
Thank you.
Okay. So back to the wastewater utility. Here we go. So same story here. Our debt service, again, is what it is. It's based on what we've already built, we need to pay it. The Finance Department has done a fabulous job here as well, refinancing as frequently as makes sense, and we've realized really good savings from those measures. Denise is... Oh, that's good. On the operational side, similar story. We do expect our, our costs, our operational expenses to increase. The main drivers in the wastewater utility are similar. Obviously, there's no raw water costs, but what we have in the wastewater utility is the cost of hauling off sludge, which is basically the solids from the system. We dry them out in, in big basins, and then we, they have to be hauled off. We're lucky, they're, they're not landfill, they're actually reused in non-food crop agriculture here locally. So that's really kind of a cool way of recycling, so...
Do we sell it?
No.
Could we sell it?
Madam Chair, we actually, there, there's a cost to haul it. So basically, we go out to bid for it, and if you look at what we're paying to get rid of it, the cost that the, the hauler sees, they're, they're getting probably some revenue from the farmers that they're selling it to. So, we, we looked at what it would cost even landfill. Our cost of landfill would be a lot higher just to haul it there and to dispose of it than what we're currently doing by using it on agriculture. So, it's the cheapest way we can get rid of it, but we still have to pay to get rid of it.
In the wastewater utility, we also benchmark very well. There's a really good survey that's done by the National Association of Clean Water Act Agencies. It's not quite as detailed as the survey that's done on the water side, but it's still really good, and we're able to benchmark nationally. I can't benchmark locally, it's not broken out in that way, but I was able to take a look at what other large utilities look like and how we benchmark against them. And you can see, we benchmark very well. Here again are, are large expenses. You can see that we do anticipate the cost of electricity to increase pretty significantly along with chemicals. On the capital side, here again are cash capital needs, but in context, this is what we're looking at. About 60% of the money going to pipelines, the remainder going to wastewater treatment plants and, and lift stations. We've got, oh, how many, is it 40 lift stations? Oh, sorry, 30 lift stations. So, and they have to be continually rehabilitated, or else really bad things will happen in our streets. So, very careful to take care of those. And then, of course, odor control is actually a very large cost driver in the wastewater utility system, and we gave you a presentation about some of our odor control efforts.
And that's still going on, and we're still working on it, correct?
Councilwoman, yes, that's correct.
Big problem district.
Yes. So here again, I wanted to give you just a, a very, you know, broad view of what our budgeted capital needs have been over time and what we're projecting them to be. And here again, you see a very similar story. We're out of our large growth timeframe, so really, what we're looking at for the future is strategic, planned, steady rehabilitation and replacement over time.
So here again, you can see our target fund balances. Again, we want to match annual debt service, and the annual debt service on wastewater is roughly around anywhere between 85 to 100 million dollars. You can see, we raised it in the earlier periods, we're drawing it down again, and then in the out years, we see it increasing as we bring on a new bond program, starting in 2021, '22.
So similar story here. We need to continue to pay for debt service, operational expenses, and, and maintain a reliable system, and we have a declining fund balance. So I will let Denise take you through our financial plan.
So as you know, we have two departments here working together. The Water Department puts together their CIP and their operation and maintenance costs, and they give it to the Finance Department, who works with the Water Department to put this in a financial plan. So the purpose of the financial plan is to figure out what kind of debt requirements we're going to need over the future five years. We also want to make sure we figure out what the revenue requirements are to support that program, and we want to maintain our AAA bond rating by meeting all of our financial targets. So that's the purpose of the financial plan. In the financial plan, the assumptions that we have are very conservative, so we're looking at 1 to 1.5% for growth in revenues. We did anticipate an El Nino during winter months, and then we bring the revenue forecast to reflect normal weather in out, out years. We use the Water Department's operation and maintenance expenses that Catherine just described. We also use her projections for, I'll say, the big four, which is chemicals, electricity, raw water, and GAC. If there's any operation and maintenance costs associated with capital projects, we will include that in the financial plan, although I think in this scenario, those costs are zero. We also reflecting our refinance savings. Again, on water, we refinanced about, well, the savings was 73.3 million dollars, very successful refinancing that we did. And then on wastewater, we were able, we were able to save 22 million dollars. And again, we want to, the important part here is to make sure that we're hitting our financial targets to maintain that AAA bond rating. So the factors that are causing a rate increase now, the first thing is, we want to make sure we're maintaining the infrastructure. One thing that the rating agencies will check when they come and visit us on this, on this credit, is they'll do a, a check to see if what they're investing in the infrastructure is close to what our annual depreciation is on these systems. And right now, what Catherine's showing you with her budget is close. So we are putting money into the infrastructure to maintain a reliable system. The second thing that Catherine showed you is, those costs are increasing related to chemicals, raw water, and her big four. The third thing is, we have been using that fund balance so that we wouldn't have to have rate... have rate increases the last few years, but that time has come to an end. So now we need to start looking at how we continue to maintain that system. And then last, we do have bond sales planned for the year '21, '22, $225 million for water and $250 million for wastewater. So when we look at these rate increases, we're also going to be very conscientious of what we're doing to our ratepayers. And so the average single-family monthly bill is going to go up $1.54. $1.13 would be related to water, and about .41 would be related to wastewater. You can see that that increase doesn't change our standings when we look at other valley cities. It really doesn't change our standing when we look at the southwest region, and we stay the fourth lowest when we look at the top 20 cities. So what this chart is showing you, again, it's a five-year financial plan, and we want to make sure you're aware that we're looking at a 3% for water this year and a 2% for wastewater. To support the five-year CIP, though, we also have future rate projections that we'll need to have to support that whole CIP. And I also want you to notice that this financial plan is very, it's the same as what we were projecting last year, so it hasn't changed. And so Catherine showed you this chart before, but I just want to really tell the story here. You know, we've had annual rate increases from 1994 to about 2012, and in that time period, the city of Phoenix's population has grown about 54%. So the water department had to support that growth during that timeframe, and they also had to meet the federal mandates. Then we had a decrease in the economy, and at that opportunity, we took that opportunity to slow down the CIP program and also to refinance that debt. And that's how we were able to maintain 0% rate increases for a few years. But now it's time that we have, our economy's starting to grow again, it's starting to stabilize, and we need to continue to support a reliable system. And that's why we're looking at very minimal rate increases going out to the future. With that, I'll turn it back over to Catherine.
Also wanted to mention, we did reconstitute the Water and Wastewater Rate Advisory Committee this last year. They've met three times to review our capital program, our operations, and to review our rate recommendation. They did vote affirmatively at their last meeting to recommend a 3% rate increase on the water utility and a 2% increase on the wastewater utility, starting March 1st of Our plan from here, we're not asking you for a formal recommendation today. What we're going to do is we are going to go out to our community during the month of November and hold various meetings, set up a place where people can email comments. We're going to do some outreach on Channel 11. We're going to make sure that we really involve the community in this decision, get some feedback and input from them. And then we'll come back to the full Phoenix City Council on December 2nd. At that point in time, what we would be asking the Phoenix City Council to do is to vote for a notice of intent to increase water rates. That's necessary. We have to first have a notice to increase the rates before we can then subsequently vote to actually increase them. So December 2nd would be the first vote, and that would be where the council would say, yes, we hope. The council will vote to put out a notice to increase rates at that time. And then the full vote would take place in January, but that really just follows the notice of intent.
Thank you. We have two members of the committee here, Claude Maddox and Richard Ray. Did you want to make any comments on why you're supporting this?
Good morning. Claude Maddox, 300 West Clarendon. First of all, let me say happy birthday to Councilmember Gallego and to Councilmember I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I've testified before this committee before. I think you know my feeling about the importance of us taking care of our infrastructure and maintaining our system. Talk about the committee for a second. The committee was made up, and I will give council credit, they appointed some excellent people, people with varying levels of understanding, but people who had specific understanding in certain areas that complemented one another. So the recommendation that's being made by this committee comes from a lot of expertise and people with a lot of knowledge. In addition to that, at Councilmember Gates' request, we specifically invited two members of the public, Mr. Ron Gallita as well as Wes Harris. Mr. Harris has extensive background with the water department. Both of them participated in the conversation, and I appreciate your recommendation in that regard because they gave us some background and insight that we, from the committee's perspective, did not necessarily have. Wes would have joined us today, but my understanding is he's had some family issues that he's having to deal with, so unfortunately, he's not able to join us. The committee, as you got kind of a snapshot of the information that we received, the committee got a fire hose of information on water. And those of us that are water wonks enjoy learning more about water, and I thank you for the opportunity to do that. But basically, it boils down to what we have heard today, and that is, we've been fortunate in not having rate increases over the last several years due to some excellent management on the part of our water department. They've done a great job on financial management and done a great job of basically restructuring the capital program so that they can continue to move forward without rates. Time to pay the piper. And so we're at that point now. The committee understands that, and they made the recommendation predicated on the fact that we now understand that moving forward to maintain the integrity of the system and to be able to operate and meet the needs of the community with safe drinking water and with being able to handle whatever wastewater, we need to be able to fund that for the future and for many years to come. And the pipes are a huge element of that, as we saw in the previous presentation. The only thing that I think that I would add is, and this is something that, as we were reviewing this, one of the questions that I continued to ask was, what happens if we don't do anything? What happens, what has happened to other cities that have kind of kicked the can down the road? And one, there, as we saw 11 billion over 20 years, they're 10 times that, and not looking at how, or not realistically understanding how they're going to pay for that. When I served on the National League of Cities Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee, one of the regular discussions, and very heated discussions, between the west and the east cities was the east cities did not want to fund infrastructure and programs in the west because it was taking away from funds that they needed to just do the basic maintenance of their communities. That was very concerning in the respect that they had let it go, and now they were looking to the federal government to try to take money away from other cities to try to patch their system back together. Chicago, Atlanta, New York, older communities. I really kind of chafe at the discussion about middle age, but, as we said, we're in a middle-aged system that has been very well maintained to this point. We should not lose that maintenance, and we should continue to move forward and look at how we can do it better. The last thing that I will say is, is that, as we were discussing in the previous presentation about repairs of leaks and catastrophic failures, another thing that we learned in this process is, again, if you ignore the system and you have these catastrophic failures, the cost is 400 times more than it is to do the maintenance on it. So preventative maintenance and dealing with this now, as opposed to waiting and dealing with it when we do have a major, either a major failure or continuing to have to just do emergency and reactionary maintenance, ultimately ends up costing us more in the long run. I appreciate the opportunity to have served, and as chairman, and I appreciate the quality of the individuals that the council appointed, and as we move forward, you know, look forward to doing it again if that's the wish of the council. With that, I'll ask if there's any questions that council members have. I know, I'm teeing you up.
You are. I appreciate it. Thank you. When it comes to the rate increase recommendation, I have to, you know, politically, no one ever wants to raise rates. We all know that. But we also, I think, most of the council, who's been here for a few years, understand that we put ourselves in this position. I know that the committee recommended a 3% increase, and then a 2% the following year, I believe. What would happen, or did you consider raising it 4%, and then we wouldn't have to raise it the following year? Would that pencil out? Did you review that?
We'll take it, and then I'm going to kick it over to our staff. We had a brief conversation about a larger increase, a larger fee increase on the front end with either smaller or no increase next year. We did not go into detail on that. It was just a conversation. My sense of the committee was is that people were agreeable to that, but, you know, we felt that our direction was to make a recommendation and to the committee, to the subcommittee, and ultimately to the council. And our experience and practice over the years has always been multiple, a five-year program. If it is, if it's the wish of the subcommittee to go back and look at that, then I believe the committee would be open to that conversation and would be interested in seeing what the recommendations would be at that point.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, actually, a 4% and a 0% would pencil out and would support the water system and debt. Now, all the requirements in the five-year forecast, starting that next year, though, we would go back, we would resume to those rate increases that we had in that chart that I showed you earlier.
Say that last part again. 4% would do it for two years?
That's correct.
And then we would return. Is that, I see, and those.
Okay, so now I got it in front of me. So we could have a 4%, then it would be a 0%, and then we would go 2% for three years and then down to 1%.
Right, okay. I understand. Any other questions while we have Mr. Maddox at the podium? Because he's always was our water guru for years. Councilman Gates.
Councilwoman Maddox, thank you very much for your service, and I want to thank Catherine and the team for reconstituting this group. I think, you know, this group played a big part, and I'm really happy to appreciate the comments about Mr. Harris and Mr. Gallita. They played a big part in getting us to where we were with several years of no rate increases. And I think it's so important because it does impact folks and to have you all weighing in on this. But I wanted to ask you, you said you were drinking from a fire hose. I hope it wasn't a fire hose of wastewater, right? It was nice, clean.
Well, we won't comment about the taste, but, no, it was, it was, it was good information, but it was just a lot of information in a short period of time to do it. But having served on other committees since my, since I haven't been on the council, I have found that the committees normally get a lot of information with a very short timeframe to make recommendations. So the expertise, as I'll go back and say, the expertise on the committee was very, very helpful because we had people that understood the engineering and the infrastructure portion. We had people that understood the operations and maintenance portion of it, people that understood the financial elements to it. And then we had folks from the public who understood the impact on the public when we have rate changes. So it was a good mixture of folks, and it made it, for folks who may not have understood certain elements of it, there was someone there that could answer those questions, be it staff or be it a member of the committee. So we had a, we had a good group working together on this.
And I was wondering, was there any discussion of the efficiency measures either that had been done over the past few years or looking at future efficiency measures in your committee discussions?
There was. I mean, part of our conversation had to do with why we're, where we're at today, which had to do with the efficiency measures. And obviously, and I'm convinced that one of the things that has been instilled by the council to the city staff is, let's see how we can do it better, how we can do it more cost-effectively, and how we can do it more efficiently. And I'm confident that when they are looking at what they're charged with, that is utmost in their minds when they're making recommendations to our committee or making, making presentations to our committee, that everything that they're including in that is the most efficient and cost-effective way to get something done.
Thanks again for serving as chair of this group. Really appreciate your time.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Ray, you also put a card in. Did you want to make any comments? Okay, cool. Thank you. And thank you for serving on this committee. Committee members, any further questions? I believe you will be bringing this back to us, but could you then supply us on the 4%, what the increase would be, as well as the other information that's been requested?
Yes, we can do that.
Oh, I did have one more question.
Yeah, sure.
Since you are, if we were to do the two years, could that be done on one vote at this time, or does it have to be?
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, do you mean if we were to do a 3% and a 2%, if we could do that in one ordinance?
In January, could we just say, yes, this year?
Yeah, the answer is yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so the council does have the discretion to adopt rates that would be effective, with one vote, adopt rates that would be effective, March 1st of 2016, and then the subsequent year, March of 2017.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. I tell you, you put a lot of work into it. Did you have a question?
I have a question. You said 5%.
I'm sorry, no, I must have misspoken.
What will be the increase?
I'm sorry, oh, if we were to do two years with one vote, so it would be the same as what you see in this financial plan. It would just be, instead of taking a vote, I think what Councilwoman Williams is talking about, is instead of taking a vote in March 1st of 2016 for the 3%, and then another vote in March of 2017 for the 2%, you would take one vote.
5%.
Well, no, it would not be 5%. It would still be 3% in 2016 and 2% in 2017. You accomplish the same thing, but you only do one vote. So you would, so the ordinance would basically say that as of March 1st, 2016, rates will increase 3%. As of March 2017, they'll increase an additional 2%. Exactly. Right.
And so the idea there is that this is a significant expense for some of our customers, and that giving them more certainty about where their billing was going will help their budgeting and even our budgeting at the city. So, for example, the parks department might have a sense of where their water bill is going and...
Councilwoman Gallego, yes, thanks for bringing that up. Absolutely. And in fact, it's relatively common in the utility industry and here in the valley as well for rates to be adopted on a two-year cycle. It's, for example, what the Board of Directors of the Central Arizona Water Conservation District does. So it's a fairly common thing, and it provides a lot of certainty to your customers, especially your large industrial customers, for whom this input is a pretty significant cost factor.
As an alum of the Salt River Project, I know when we did our electricity ratemaking processes, one of the things we would hear most loudly was, we need to know what's coming. We have a long budget process, and when you SRP change your rate structure, it really impacts our budget. So the more notice you can give us, the better. We heard that very definitively sometimes.
Yeah. Councilwoman Gallego, absolutely. And in fact, we field a lot of phone calls from homeowner associations, large industrial customers, others, and they'll ask specifically that, well, what is my cost going to be next year? And currently, we can't answer that. We say, well, it's always at the discretion of the council. So giving, so doing this for two years with one vote would certainly give that certainty. And I know that it would be appreciated by many of those customers.
Just a question on this chart that's up here right now. So you have the combined rate increase based upon the proposed 3% water, 2% sewer, combined water and sewer of 2.6. But then for 2017, again, you have the same, 3% water, 2% sewer, but the combined water and sewer is only 2. Can you explain why that is?
Yes, we have a correction to make on the water one, so in March of 2017, that 3 should actually be a 2.
Gotcha.
I apologize for that.
And one other thing, getting back to the, sorry, kind of jumping back to the pipelines. So again, the, what you're hoping to spend on pipelines for the next five years is $370 million.
Correct.
Right. Is that water and wastewater combined? Is that water and wastewater combined? Or is that just water?
No. I'm sorry, Councilmember Gates, that's just water. And then, in wastewater, it is two-ninety, I believe. I have to double-check my slide here. Three-seventy-three in water, and then, capital needs. I believe it's two-hundred-and-ninety million in wastewater. I'll double-check that for you.
And what's the total budget first for water over the next five years? Or, in other words, what percentage is that, that pipeline amount?
Let me go back to this pie chart, because that will help you. So, you can see, so this is the, so for wastewater, this is the, these are five-year costs. So, over the five years, you can see that fifty-five percent of it is in capital, and you can see the proportion there that's in our cash capital program versus our debt service. And then, the remainder is our operational expense. And the chart looks similar for water, but I believe it's a fifty-two, forty-eight percent split.
Okay, so, it's just trying to do fast math here, eight-twenty, so it's about a billion-ish?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's down at the bottom. Yeah, it's about a billion.
Okay, there it is. Okay.
Yeah.
So, that, so, of the billion over the next five years, this is wastewater, so about, almost thirty percent is in pipelines.
That would be about correct, yes. And let me go back to water, because that's probably, whoops, here we go.
And that's two. So, on the water side, it's not as high, well, yeah, it's not quite as high.
It's not quite as high. Councilmember Gates, wastewater utilities tend to be a little bit more capital-intensive than water utilities, so that's the difference in the percentage that you see there.
Thank you.
Any further questions? If not, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Brings us to item six, which is call to the public. Diane Barker.
Thank you, Madam Chairman Williams and committee. Diane Barker, I'm in District Six, and I'd just like to say, you know, I've come before the public meetings, and I'm not a registered lobbyist, and I don't have any monetary interest in this, but I guess just what drives me basically is, is that I got involved with transportation with the city of Phoenix and coming to meetings, and I thought that maybe I could contribute something by bringing something from, whether it was MAG or the state level or whatever, into the body. And that's what I want to say today. I admire our water chief here, Sorenson. I've met her, a very bright woman, and I was thinking about our councilwoman's project that's blighted up in Metro Center. There's three-hundred million dollars that's supposed to be coming, you know, for the extension of the light rail. And I was just wondering, with tomorrow, with the city council, there's going to be a hundred million dollars go to base of schools, and we're giving seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for IT for transit radio. We're needing a lot of repair, reuse for the water system. Our trade with Mexico, I understand, from MAG is, one of the biggest things is welding needs to happen. You know, they have the Ford motor down there. Apparently, we make parts here. But with all of these forces coming together, if they could, would consider school, and it would be for repairing, and it could be around Metro Center or there, and all of these forces would come, because, you know, not everybody, even though we're pushing, go to college, I'm an example of that. I should have had some type of a skill to have put in-between jobs. You know, had been real estate agent, then not having the license and so forth, and taking a five-hour, five-dollar-an-hour job. If I had a skill, I could have sustained myself better. And what I'm saying is, is that, let's have the trade sale, let's have the expanded metro tack, whether it's, you could bring it together with bringing, transportation is crucially important to our youth, they're living with their parents. They don't have the lifestyle that the boomers have, and we should not press that on and make them feel ashamed if they don't own or want to even drive a car, because there's a lot you can do, not spending your time locked into transportation, the single occupancy vehicle. The city of Phoenix still promotes giving a discount if you come by car, and there's no mention that if you used another transit, incentives. I have also here, with MAG is supposed to be the lead of planning and helping the trip reduction, city of Phoenix only has a quarter of its workforce into the MAG trip reduction plan. And the thing about it is, I don't see the incentives, even though we do pay for the good express bus service that's been coming for decades into the city of Phoenix. You don't see it advertised that much, you don't get complimented on it. People feel so sorry when they hear another person's car is down. Now, my friend who came here today couldn't stay, and I will finish it. This man's transmission was down in his car, and what he did was, he started using the transit system. He lost sixty pounds in a year, and he's able to support himself, go to college now, and keep a job in this new lifestyle.
Thank you, Diane. Our next item is our future agenda items. Do we have a list here? Is there anything anyone wants to add or change? Violence is golden. Well, I'm going to take that as a no, but if you change your mind, let me know, and we can always move it up on the agenda or change or add it. With that, we are adjourned.